As you're recording webcasting of our special meeting tonight, those in attendance are informed that as per policy number seven, regular and special meetings of the board may be streamed live, archived, or accessed online. The board reserves as its sole discretion via motion at any meeting the right to not stream live or archive a meeting or a portion of a meeting. Further, the board reserves the right to edit any scheduled portion, any recorded portion of a meeting. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to an order. It is now six oh three PM. And I just want to start out with acknowledging that the Langley School District is located on the traditional ancestral and unceded territories of the Matasque, Kwantlin, Katsi, and Semiamu First Nations. We gather here tonight in understanding of the importance of yaiyastal, skekka yaios, working together, and natsamot, letzamot, uniting ourselves with one mind, one heart, to ensure that we support, inspire, and inspire all learners to reach their full potential. I'd like to now start out with singing the national anthem. And all those who'd like to rise, go ahead. You may be seated. And on to, we'd like to honor, start off this special night with welcoming and honoring from the First Kwantlin. We'd like to introduce Kevin Kelly and his son, Michael Kelly Gabriel, from the Kwantlin First Nation. Go ahead.
Well, CM, my traditional name is Salasalton. I carry my late father's name where I'm from Swali First Nation up in Colton's Lake. My first name is Kevin Kelly. My wife is Torditer Chief Marilyn Gabriel. Her traditional name is Takwasan. I really want to thank Gordon and Mike Pugh for always respecting the Kwantlin people. You know, a lot of times when I carry out this work for my wife Marilyn, a lot of times we get asked to do this work for her legs and her voice. She's put in a full day at home, so she's at home. I said to her, you want to, is there anything you want us to say to Charlie? And she said, you don't know what to say for me. But I thank you for respecting the land, but I also thank you for respecting the community, the community of all ages. I will bring this back to Marilyn, her elders, our youth, and our future. What I'd like to say to Charlie is, from my wife, the chief, sorry she couldn't be here, but she really wants to congratulate you on your new journey. She holds her hands up for what you've done as a council, but also trustee. When I moved here 30 years ago, you were principal in the schools. And now that you're back, you're going to help a lot of people out, Charlie. You know, my son will say things that I won't say on behalf of Kwantlin, but knowing you as a friend, Charlie, you have a big heart. I don't know children or everything to you and your wife. These are the gifts that you give back to our town, our township of Langley. You help all children out. I am honored to be here, and I congratulate you for Marilyn, my wife, the chief, and I really mean that, Charlie. What Marilyn said to me to the people that are here before I left, Charlie is not just a school trustee. Charlie is a family friend of the Gabriel family for many, many years and the Kwantlin people. You know, we know what you do outside your home and your community, but you are a family friend, and you always will be. I want you to know that, Charlie. But we wish you nothing but the best of luck and the work that you're going to carry out for the education of all children. So I'll let my son speak. Thank you, Charlie.
Aes wel si ayah. I start the day off by thanking our chitzo CM. Chitzo CM in our language is our creator. I thank our ancestors before us because without them, we wouldn't have these teachings or this medicine that we carry today. Our old ones in our communities because they're the ones that paved the way for the younger generation, planting seeds for the newer generation. Our youth in our community, our children, for making sure that we're set on the right path, and the ones that are unborn yet. I hold my hands up to them. I want to say, we've been praying for you for a long time, all our family that aren't here physically here, the ones, our school district family here, and the ones that are here. We've been asked here to come here to do an opening, but to also honor our dear friend, Charlie. I ask everybody to come here slapzamot, in our language, that's one mind and one heart, yaiyastal, in our language means working together. And when we're in this room, everybody is slapzashwali, in our language, that means one spirit when you're united. When we sit around in a circle and we're together, no one's better than anyone else. That's what we are here. Everybody is equal. So I thank our dear friend, Charlie. This is a beautiful day, and you're being honored for all the good things that you do. That's why you sit here on your journey. Creator has brought you here. We have gifts to bring to the school district to help navigate and bring out the gifts of the children that are here. So I hold my hands high. In our culture, when we hold our hands high, you know, we have the most utmost respect for each and every one of you, because the gifts that you bring too as well. And when there's no way of saying thank you, through this pandemic, you know, our minds and our hearts and our emotions and our spirits have been really low. And my grandma Helen shares with me all the time, people often take care of their mental health, their physical health, their emotional health, but they forget about their spiritual side. So today, the songs that we bring here today, the prayers that we bring here today are for each and every one of you here to uplift your mind, your heart, your emotions, and your spirits, because we don't know what journey you're going through here today, or what's going on behind closed doors. So when we share these songs, people ask all the time. I asked my uncle Stephen Point, why are people still drawn to the drum? And he said, nephew, you remember when you were nine months in your mom's womb, what did you hear? Your heartbeat. When we share our songs and our drum, it's a heartbeat of our people, but also the heartbeat of our ancestors. So we have no higher way of saying thanks to everybody here at the school district for working so tireless, for being Kwantlin tireless runners and tireless hunters through this pandemic. And I want to thank you in the best way that we can since the beginning of time with our ancestors, because you guys have been going and going and going since the beginning. And I want to uplift you. Today is an uplifting day, but also to honor our dear friend on this journey going forward. This is for you guys. The thank you song, when we hold our hands up, it's showing our respect to each and every one of you here. It came to me when we were doing our salmon ceremony, and we asked one of our people that teach our culture to us, was that ceremony perfect? And he says, everything was perfect, but you forgot one thing. There is supposed to be a song when the people come in, you're supposed to recognize and hold our hands up to all the people, so we don't know how far they've come. So when I send this song, just imagine our people coming up during our ceremony, holding their hands high, thanking you for all the good work. When we send these songs, our ancestors will be here with us, each and every one of your ancestors on your journeys to give you strength through those times you feel like you can't go on. I thank you from the bottom of our heart, from our Kwantlin family, we thank you for all the relatives, Samiamu, Katsi, Matasque. We thank you for taking care of the most precious thing that we cherish in our heart and why we sit at these tables, our children. And we sit at the table, when we sit at tables like this, we don't sit for ourselves, we sit for the next seven generations. That's how our community looks forward to our youth. You guys have the most important jobs, most important jobs, and don't ever think that you don't. Thank you for all the good things that all of you sitting behind the computer and the ones that are here are doing right now. It doesn't go unrecognized, the community have been speaking of all the hard decisions and other good things that you do. They send their love and they send their prayer. I've been going to the schools. So I hold my hands up. This is a thank you song. So thank you, my family, my school district family, for all the good things that you're doing, and congratulations to our dear friend, Charlie. And thank you for all recognizing the traditional territory, honoring our community, and accepting this prayer. We love you all.
Well, again, thank you to Kevin Kelly and to his son, Michael Kelly Gabriel. And I'm so grateful that, for your kind words, and very few people use the word love. And so, thank you for sharing that, because that's one of the things that you guys have really reminded and modeled to me is love, and how you've loved me and certainly this community. So I am so grateful for you, and please say hello to your lovely wife as well, and your mother. She's a beautiful woman, and we really respect and appreciate her. So, thank you. Moving along now, I've got some introductions to make, and starting at the top, we've got a number of guests that are with us tonight. I've already mentioned Michael Kelly Gabriel and Kevin Kelly. On our staff, we have Anthony Biondi, our Communications and Events Specialist. Mike Pugh is with us. He's the District Principal of Aboriginal Education. Del Voe, Technical Support Specialist. Paul Bobeau, Technical Support Specialist. Our Superintendent is Gordon Stewart, and our Secretary of Treasury, Brian Isely, are also here tonight. Some partner groups I'd like to recognize. Jeremy Linden is the LPVPA President. Kim Anderson is the LPVPA Vice President. David Scott, QP 1260 Representative. Alicia Rempel, DPAC President. Tanya Kerr, LTA President. Raylene Shalick, QP 1260 President, and Cheryl Barnum, QP 1851 President. President, yes. And our trustees tonight, I want to introduce our new trustee, Charlie Fox. He's going to be, soon to be a full-fledged trustee, but tonight, just a new trustee for the next 10 minutes anyway. Marnie Wilson is a trustee. Tony Ward, trustee. Suzanne Perro, trustee. Shelley Coburn, trustee. David Todd, trustee. And I am the chair. Thank you very much. And welcome everyone tonight to our very special meeting of the Board of Education. And we finished our introduction, so I'd just like to have a consideration of agenda. And I need the mover and a seconder for the agenda to be approved tonight. So can I have a mover, please? I see that hand. Oh my goodness, there's David Todd. Thank you, David Todd. And Marnie, I can see you. Oh, there's David Ward too, but I got Marnie first. So, Marnie, thank you very much. And now we're going to move on to the oath of office, and our Secretary of Treasury, Brian Isely, will take the lead on this. Thank you, Mr. Isely.
Thank you, Board Chair. It's my honor tonight to facilitate the swearing in of our newest trustee, Charlie Fox. Pursuant to section 50.1 of the School Act, a person elected or appointed to an office must make a prescribed oath of office within 40 days, 45 days, pardon me, after the declaration of an election appointment. So after Mr. Fox reads his oath, as I step aside in a moment, I will ask him to sign two copies of that oath, one for himself and one for the school district. And at this point, I will call you forward to take your oath.
Thank you very much. I, Charlie Fox, do solemnly affirm that I am qualified to hold the office as a trustee in the Langley School District and meet trustee qualification requirements set out in the School Act. I have not, by myself or any other person, knowingly contravened the School Act, respecting vote buying, intimidation, or other election offenses in relation to my election as a trustee. I will abide by the School Act, and I will faithfully perform the duties of my office, and will not allow any private interests to influence my conduct in public matters. I will comply with the requirements of the School Act that relate to conflict of interest, and in particular, I will comply with the requirements relating to disclosure of punitive and indirect punitive interest in a matter.
Oh, this is a school district pen.
Nothing but the best.
With that, I would like to congratulate trustee Fox on his appointment to the board, and on behalf of staff, look forward to working with you. And I'd like now turn it over to our board chair.
And thank you very much. And it's an exciting day. And so it looks like tonight, we will have opportunity for us to share some welcoming statements to our new trustee. So I'll open that up in just a minute, but I just want to say a few words before we get that. I was thinking about what to say about Charlie, and of course, he's got a great reputation, but I was listening to the sound of music. And so there's this song on it, it's called "Climb Every Mountain," and it goes like this, the lyric, climb every mountain, ford every stream, follow every rainbow till you find your dream. Tonight, you found your dream role. A former principal, teacher, township counselor, and now role of school trustee, the Board of Education welcomes Charlie Fox in achieving his dream. Welcome to the board, Charlie. There you go. Anyway, trustees, I do have a few minutes before our next meeting goes, so if you'd like to, oh, I'd like to open it up for a few welcoming comments, if you'd like to, who would you like to start out with? Go ahead, David Todd. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you. Perfect, thank you.
Well, I just, I wanted to welcome you, Charlie. As an educator, I totally respect everything you've done in the past in your school and your number of years of service. I got to know you briefly through our work on the Youth Advisory Committee, and you always had a heart for kids, and that was what I was so impressed by, and the special relationships you garnered with the kids just on that committee. Those were the leaders of tomorrow, and I was especially impressed with your work on the Langley Hub. And I look forward to, you know, like that type of person. And then I reached out once again to you when I was trying to move forward with the Rainbow Cross Walk. And once again, you just gave me nothing but just really sage advice and tremendous support. So I appreciate everything you've done in the past, and I look forward what more you can do until 2022. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Other trustees would like to speak up? You're welcome to. We do have a few minutes, and then I'd like to let Charlie have a few moments to respond as well. Don't speak all at once. Okay, go ahead, Tony Ward, please.
Okay. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Charlie. It's a long journey. You've had a lot of different experience throughout your years, and I just want to say, congrats. My memory goes back to when you were my principal at Blacklock, grade six and seven, and I still remember a farewell address that you used to give the grade seveners before they bounced off to secondary school. So you talked to each class. So, and then of course, so that's when you were Principal Fox to me, and then Mr. Fox, and then later on, obviously, just knowing you for years, not having much of a dialogue, but it's just an interesting role, going to that and to Counselor Fox, and now trustee Fox. So congratulations. I'm really looking forward to working alongside you and gleaning from your knowledge, wisdom, and experience. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Ward. Now on to trustee Shelley Coburn, please.
Well, I'm going to have to go from Charlie to Mr. Fox to trustee Fox. So trustee Fox, welcome. It's no secret that I have a real soft spot for you, so I'm just going to get that out there right now. Really excited to have you serve with us, and I think for me, what really, what I do appreciate so much about you is your soft spot for vulnerable and at-risk youth, and how you do do a lot of work in the community, but there's a lot of work you do do that nobody knows about, but I've seen because I also do similar work. And I think that speaks volumes about a person when they are who they are when nobody's watching. So you've had quite an illustrious career in education, and I do think it's a lovely full circle for you to come back at this point and join us at the table. So I look forward to working with you, and I'm really happy that you're here. So welcome, Mr. Trustee Fox.
Thank you, trustee Coburn.
And thank you again, Shelley Coburn, for that comment. And now trustee Marnie Wilson, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would, thank you. Congratulations, trustee Fox, on your election, and I want to welcome you to our board. As I'm sure you may have heard, our board has had its share of issues, but I want you to know that over the past few months, we have worked hard on building better relationships and working more cohesively together, and we did that for you. But we didn't know it would be you, but we knew whoever it was was going to need us to step up and create a respectful environment for whoever came in. So I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad you're coming into this new board, and I hope that you will join us in our new journey and in the important work that we are all elected to do. So congratulations again. I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and thank you, trustee Wilson, for that. Suzanne Perro, trustee Perro, would you like to speak up?
Thank you kindly. And also, Charlie, a warm congratulations and welcome to you to this board. We are very delighted that we get to share this next 18 months with you and you with us, and super excited to have you sitting at the table, to grow with you and by you and alongside you, and serving our kiddos. And I know your heart's there. We had some really good conversations, and I highly respect that. And we're, yeah, just super thankful to have you be a part of us in that you're coming to the table with wisdom and skill where we can hit the floor running and just keep moving in the direction we need to go to do support our district leadership team and our students. And I have every confidence in you that you are such an amazing attachment to us. And so I'm excited for you, and I have to say, I'm very thankful that we have decided to have this night for you, because this is an important night, and I'm thankful that we are gathered here to celebrate you and your victory and your accomplishments and the hard work that you put forward to secure this position. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustees. I really appreciate those kind words. And now I'm just going to pass it over to trustee Fox. Go ahead, trustee Fox, your comments, please.
Well, thank you, Board Chair Ross, and thank you to the lovely comments from soon-to-be five colleagues sitting at the table. I am truly, truly excited about it. As I think trustee Coburn said, this is full circle. I've been in this room many, many times, but in a totally different context and in a totally different role. But believe me, what stands behind me is what this district's about, and I'm really excited about providing the leadership that you six people, trustees, do, and working together, collaborating in a cohesive manner to get the best efforts and the best results for our students. And that's a really important thing. Now, I have to be honest, I have to thank my family. My wife let me do this, actually. I did consult with her. I want to be honest, she's watching somewhere. Hi, Diane. And so that's exciting, and I'm looking forward to working with the senior management team, many of whom I've worked with before. I've had Superintendent Stewart as a vice principal when I was a principal, so I know full well what his strengths are, and I know some skeletons in the closet as well. But I won't dwell on that tonight. I'm just excited to work with the people who are in the board office and who have provided me a very nice welcome as the trustee-elect, now trustee. And I want to thank each and every trustee that reached out and congratulated me, and I look forward to the journey for the next 18 months. It's exciting. We're working with students. We're working for student success and achievement, and outcomes are really critically important. So thank you. And outcomes are really critically important. So thank you, and let's get on with work.
Thank you very much, Charlie. I just want to say my final comments are, Charlie, make us better. We're a great district. Make us better. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
And we're just going to adjourn our very short special meeting tonight, so I need a mover for adjournment.
Actually, can I vote on this?
Yes, you can vote on this. You're now.
There you go.
Yeah, you can vote.
I vote to adjourn. Can I move adjournment?
Let Charlie have the, can I second though?
You can, and we'll have trustee Shelley Coburn will be the second. Thank you very much. All those in favor of adjournment, please. And it is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Wonderful.
Take care.
Ciao.
Have a good night.